Good evening, thank you for being here. Tonight's special meeting, I call the Special Wichita Board of Education of February 29, 2024 in order. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready with the greater community. We are holding this public hearing tonight to gather information to inform the board's decision-making in advance of our BOE meeting on Monday, this coming Monday, March 4th. At Monday's meeting, we will review and consider the plan that was presented to the board in January and February. Tonight, the board is here to listen. We want to process all the input from tonight's official meeting, as well as the unofficial meetings, tours that we've had during the week, and all the correspondence we have received on this topic. Monday night will be the time for the board to debate, ask questions, and explain their positions. We should all celebrate that we are coming together tonight as a community to discuss our Wichita School District, which we all love. And again, tonight, the board is here to listen. As such, I want to remind everyone here about how we will handle tonight's agenda. After our board's hearing tonight, excuse me, shortly here, we will have brief remarks by Superintendent Beaufeld, and then we will invite each speaker forward to the podium. When you come forward, you will have three minutes to speak. There will be a timer to help you keep track of your three minutes. When your time has concluded, I will ask you to finish your sentence and allow the next speaker to come forward. If you have any materials for distribution to the board, please give them to the clerk of the board as you approach the podium, and he will handle distribution. I would also ask that in the interest of time and courtesy to all speakers, that the audience maintain a professional atmosphere and that you refrain from applause or other forms of disruption. We truly want to hear every single word, and we want to take each of those words in. We all truly want to hear what the speakers have to say. With that, Patrick, can you read our first item?
First item, under Operations, Public Hearing Regarding Closing of Schools and Student Reassignment.
Did you want to...
Read the item.
Go ahead and read the whole item.
On January 22nd, 2024, at the board's regular meeting, the board received information projecting a $42 million shortfall for the 2024-25 fiscal year. At the recommendation of administration, the board requested staff identify potential building closures to eliminate this shortfall. At the board's request, on February 12th, 2024, at the board's regular meeting, administration proposed closing the following buildings: Hadley Middle School, Jardine STEM Career Exploration Magnet School, Clark Elementary School, Cleveland Traditional Magnet School, Park Elementary School, and Payne Elementary School. At that same meeting, the board announced a public hearing to be held on February 29th, 2024 regarding the proposed school closures. The board also authorized publication of a notice of hearing. This notice is found in Appendix 1 and was published in the Wichita Eagle on February 14th and February 18th, 2024. This item provides for a public hearing regarding proposed school closings.
Thank you, Patrick. Superintendent Beaufeld, before we begin calling our speaker forward, could you please remind us of the ways we have received feedback up to this point? Transparency is important, and I want everyone to understand what has been done to hear the public voice.
Sure, I would be glad to. Thus far, over the past few weeks, numerous opportunities have been created to share information to respond to stakeholder questions and input. Some of these have included our specific email address, our info@ and our transform24 email address. Up to this point, 19 emails have been sent to that email address with questions about budget and staffing and the school closure recommendations. We also have a dedicated website at usd259.org/transform24. Since January 22nd, when we launched the website, we've had 4,093 total visits and 6,474 page views. We have so far had six posts on our English-language Facebook and five on our Spanish-language Facebook, specifically to what we're speaking about tonight, along with numerous Patreon responses on these other threads. We've had active media engagement and interviews, including three different media sessions that we've conducted. The parent support center that we've been promoting has taken so far 92 phone calls and 13 emails. We've sent 15 parent link messages to our parents, both general to all parents and then some targeted to the buildings that are impacted. This is to convey key information and provide access to information about the resources that are available, including things like the website, the phone number, and the help desk. Over the past few weeks, we've had over 200 participants that attended three community listening sessions. These were held on February 21st, 22nd, and 26th. You may have noticed that if you came in this entrance, as you walked in, we have posted all of the feedback from those listening sessions for everyone to see. All this feedback has also been transcribed and typed out, and has been presented to the Board of Education, along with some themes that have been lifted out for you to summarize, too. Everything has been posted online as our commitment to transparency. You can find all of this information, everything that I just referenced, at www.usd259.org/transform24. We will also respond to questions that may arise tonight, and do our best to provide responses on our website and during next Monday's presentation as appropriate.
Thank you, Superintendent. Your Board of Education is here to listen to you, our speakers. We are here because we want to hear your thoughts on a very difficult proposal that is before the BOE. We won't discuss or debate the proposal tonight; that will occur at our business meeting on Monday, but tonight is about hearing your feedback. With that, Patrick, will you call our first speaker?
Yes. The first registered speaker for this evening is Sarah Johnson.
I do not see Sarah. If it's okay with the board, at the end of... We'll skip over the ones that aren't here, but at the very end, if it's okay with the board, I'll ask whether or not we could maybe review if that person came in later. Would that be okay with the board?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll skip over Speaker 1 right now, and I will underline... Next speaker.
Next speaker, Laura Branning.
Is Laura here? Okay, we will ask again for her later. Patrick, third speaker.
Third speaker, Kashima Ford.
If you have a presentation, give that to the board clerk, and then he'll pass it out to us. As soon as Patrick gets back to his desk, we'll start your time.
All right. Good evening, Wichita Public School Board of Education members, parents, family, students. My name is Kashima Ford. I'm a parent of a student at Jardine Middle School. She's attended from the sixth grade and looking forward to graduate eighth-grade year. Also say we're missing our family fun bingo night tonight, just to be here. That's been a Jardine tradition for us, so... Nonetheless, we'll begin before my time is out. Wichita Public Schools currently serve almost 50,000 students. Most of the students that attend Wichita Public Schools are children of color, and 80% of them qualify for free and reduced lunches. This reflects or shows there is an economic or poverty trend that these children are already at a disadvantage. So, in closings, we're already taking away from children that are disadvantaged. I'll start there. Okay. There's a shortage of teachers, staff, and transportation, as well as safety being a priority. I handed out as far as enrollment. Enrollment is not at a low, which is part of the reason why they're saying as far as the deficit and the funds, which we were allocated over $264 million of ESER 1, 2, and 3 for the elementary and secondary schools, emergency relief directly responding to the impact of COVID, and $42 million in debt to close six schools, $16 million, it still doesn't add up. Not sure what happened to the budgeting and the allocation of the funds. Obviously, there's some misappropriation going on there, is what we believe, or I do as a parent, which now the children are at a disadvantage. Main concern is the safety, the blighted areas which those schools will leave open, those territories for gangs, drugs, homelessness, which is at a high. Imagine leaving your kid on the block, 6 o'clock in the morning, waiting for a bus in the dark. You know? That's the main concern. The support that they would need also, kind of as cited in the Sunflower, which we already at a disadvantage for mental health and things like that. The children are not able to get the help that they need right now. That was also cited by Melody, the board member in the Sunflower. And then also, just with the transportation issue with the buses. It's a lot more that was not able to be covered. I just hope that you would take into consideration the main concern, the priorities, the safety of our students and our children, leaving them without their schools, the loss, the grievance that they would suffer as the stages of the developmental parts of their childhood being gone, elementary to middle school, those transitions can be as more impactful from middle school to high school, going into an adult. They don't have those developmental skills quite yet. As they go on, they have nothing to look back to. Those schools are gone, those relationships, those bonds, those families. Keep in mind, you know, these are really impactful years for the kids. I grew up Wichita Public Schools, graduated from them. Mr. Vong, I believe you did also, as you cited in the Wichita or the Sun's article as well. So we have that connection, continue to have, you know, the same voices, you know, for our children that we didn't get. And then the statute, as far as the legalities, is all that I wanted to bring up. I'm not sure what is legal according to the statute 721431, having the 45 days to petition, to go through the stages of the policy or the process for the school closings. Did we uphold the legalities of that statute and where we are?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you, and this is just for all the other speakers, if you're not able to get through your entire statement in three minutes, please feel free to email each of us your entire statement. Patrick, next speaker.
Next speaker, Michael Jordan.
Is a Michael Jordan here? Patrick, next item, I mean, next speaker.
Next speaker, Megan Butenbach.
Hang on one second, make sure the clerk's ready. Thank you, Patrick. Go ahead, Megan.
My name is Megan Butenbach. My son Oscar is a fourth grader at Cleveland Traditional Magnet in the Mixed Abilities Program. He's also an autistic person with high support needs who happens to be nonverbal. I don't know if the BOE and superintendent have ever thought about what it's like for a kid like him to be in a situation like this. He can't ask me if his school is going to be open next year. He can't ask if he'll still be in Mr. Jay's class, or if he'll see his friends in Paris again. He can't tell me if he's scared, worried, anxious, or sad. He has to rely on his parents, his family, and his amazing guidance counselor, teachers and support staff at Cleveland, to tell him what's going on and help him process his emotions. He and other fourth graders like him are getting punished the most in this situation. They're expected to make two transitions to two new schools in two years, make new friends twice, be the new kid twice, learn a new building, learn a new schedule twice. How is that fair, kind, or respectful when they already have solid and established relationships with their peers, teachers, and staff? What's more inconsiderate and downright mean is that autistic children like my son and his classmates often experience rates of loneliness four times greater than that of their peers, and have harder times making new and meaningful relationships. And this is supposed to be putting people over buildings. You know what it's like living in a state of stress and anxiety and how that'll affect my son? Increased negative behaviors, whether it's due directly to the stress of switching schools or because he's not sleeping well due to that stress. He's finally found some coping skills and can be redirected thanks to his amazing parents who know his actions aren't personal, but caused by him having a hard time. His amazing teacher, Jeremiah Magnus, has become one of the most trusted people in my son's life outside of our family. As parents, we've been very lucky to have supportive parents at Cleveland. He started to gain some words recently, and they carry cards specifically for him to show him the words that he's saying. He's made significant progress in the last few years, and it wouldn't have been possible without the consistent encouragement and support from his teachers and parents at Cleveland. My son stands to lose all meaningful connections he's built over the last five years outside of our home if Cleveland is closed. Autistic people are more likely to experience feelings of isolation compared to their peers. My son is not an exception to this. The BOE want to look past all the people my son has made so many important and trusted relationships with. They want to tell us that they don't matter because they're going to close a school no matter what, and it's all because my school doesn't have a cafeteria.
Thank you, Megan. Patrick, I appreciate you reading the names instead of me, because I think some of these names I'm going to mess up, so... Go ahead, next speaker.
Next speaker, Candida Geronimo.
You may start.
My name is Candida Geronimo. I have spent the last 12 years as a sped para at Park Elementary, enriching young lives. My first day at Park, I was greeted and accepted with such love and compassion. This experience was so impactful that when I was asked if I was willing to move again, I refused because I had finally found my forever home. Park is more than just an educational institution. It is a family, it is our home away from home. The students here are our children, our children that we teach how to read and write and calculate numbers, our children that we nurture and teach right from wrong. Our children who attend this school are not just learning academics, they are also learning about life, resilience, and community spirit. We give them consistency, we listen to them, we provide them with a safe place. Some of these children struggle with consistency in their home lives, but they know that no matter what, school stays the same. We have created a foundation, a place they attend five days a week with familiar faces and surroundings. They have a sense of belonging, just as I did. They found their home. I worry about the many children and their families who have no means of transportation, and if they don't live 2.5 miles or more from their newly assigned building, they do not qualify for a bus. They will have to walk anywhere from 1 to 2.4 miles to get to and from school. There are many logistical and transportation adjustments that most parents won't be able to accommodate, such as illnesses, emergencies, and extreme weather. For these families, that is simply impossible. We already have families with challenges getting their children to and from school. This will inevitably cause an increase in absenteeism across the board because they will have no way to get to school safely, thus stunting their academic, social, and emotional growth. When you choose to close Park, you are choosing to disrupt a newcomers program that has grown from one class to three in one year as the need has quickly increased, to create instability for children and families whose lives are already filled with instability, to detrimentally impact students' academic performance, to exacerbate longstanding disability-based disparities in academic as well as social and emotional growth in children with special needs, to create uncertainty in my life as well as all staff affected by these closures. All employees are not getting support needed from you in job placement or any guarantee that our jobs are not in jeopardy after the next school year. Some staff have been with the school for years now and are being told that the qualifications for their jobs have changed, and now they must either pass certain tests or go back to school to get another degree to qualify for the job they have been doing for our children for many years now. In closing, I implore you, please, fight for another avenue and avoid school closures. Fight for our students, fight for our families, fight for our communities, fight for us, because we deserve better.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Patrick, next speaker.
Next speaker, Samantha Stillman.
My name is Samantha Stillman, and I have six children in USD 259. My kids have been going to the Payne Elementary for the last nine years, and it's been more than just a school for us, but a beacon of hope. When my son was four, he had a stroke and developed epilepsy, and teachers stayed before school, after school, and worked through lunch to figure out the signs of when he was going to have a seizure and how to administer emergency medication. If it wasn't for Payne, my daughter, my oldest, I wouldn't have known anything was medically wrong with her, nothing changed at home, but they noticed subtleties in her personality and the way she was acting. And with their swift phone calls and noticing those minuscule changes in her, I wouldn't have gotten a diagnosis of autoimmune encephalitis and narcolepsy. There are days where she wakes up and she doesn't know who I am, and they helped us work through it. And these students at Payne, they're not just students to the principal Tina, they're her children. She's so personal, even though my daughter doesn't go there anymore. If I'm in the office and she's there, she asks me how she's doing, because even though she's gone to middle school now, that's still her child, and that's how the entire staff is at Payne. Their genuine love and care for the students not only reflects on each individual, but it also reflects on their state assessment scores. Our district scores for ELA is 33.17 and for math, 31.29, and of all the elementary schools, Payne scored the highest in both of those two categories at 69.52 and 71.96. And eight of the lowest scores marked and read on that sheet of all eight, six of those are magnet schools. So obviously, Payne is doing something right. Another thing I want to get into is, you talked about transparency, and I didn't see it. Financials were released, but there are no balances. I do not see where funds are being allocated. I do not see the balances of anything. And if you look at the check ledgers, it looks like you copy and pasted December and November together because the numbers are the exact same. I also want to know, what's the point of work comp? I handle that in my company, and I can see that we've paid out $7 million just in the month of January to claims, another $2 million in prescriptions. What's the point of health insurance? We're spending more on those than we are food. On top of that, you talked about FCI, and I can see Park being put up because of the 0.95, but why is Adams not being considered? They're in the middle of six other schools. If you divide their head count by that many schools, you disperse 53 students, you can see that I've gone through every single ledger. Transportation has gone up almost $4 million in three months, and it doesn't make any sense. These things need to be looked at before schools being cut, because we can make budget cuts without having to sacrifice schools.
Thank you, Samantha. Patrick, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Thomas Montiel.
Thank you, Thomas, you may proceed.
All right, good evening. Can you actually hear me pretty well?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Starting tonight, your actions will now tell the entire USD 259 community, including staff, families, and... the entire USD 259 community, including staff, families, and taxpayers, if you care about the integrity of the process, accountability to your stakeholders, your commitment to the future of our students, and if you'll demonstrate the responsibility necessary to be trusted with our children, educators, and dollars. You can either see this as an amazing opportunity to get things right, unify stakeholders, and set a new meaningful path forward. Or you can continue down the direction of the past with meaningless public appearances, shallow public statements, and a clear disconnect between family, staff, and district. With budget challenges, staffing shortages, and open enrollment around the corner, you can decide to take on the world on your own and fail with low student academic scores and a lack of trust amongst everyone. Or you can lead and mobilize our entire community to rally around our shared cause, our students. But that is up to you. We do not need to continue to be divided as a group. You are voted into this your positions for a variety of reasons that include fiscal responsibility, government accountability, raising the bar for student success and learning, and to be the voice of us, your community. You are not voted into rubber-stamped district recommendations without asking DLT publicly meaningful questions for multiple options and the information necessary to ensure the job is done right. The timeline and materials provided have been unfair to you and the stakeholders to adequately review, request additional information, and prepare for logical conversations. These include specific numbers associated with the 2425 budget that demonstrate the $42 million deficit, an itemized savings list for Phase 1 and 2, i.e. how much every step is actually saving the district, or a calculated risk assessment that each decision carries, i.e. the projected loss of students, staff, and funds these decisions will hold. As of now, we are all viewing this issue partially blind. As a parent of seven kids in the district, five that attend Cleveland, there is zero ground for explanations of why it was on the list based on the information the district has provided. We are 15th best on the FCI score for elementary schools, not including K through 8, 11th lowest amount of deferred maintenance, 4th highest utilization percentage, and there is always a high demand from parents, including a waiting list. Special mixed abilities wing, which was mentioned earlier by another parent with an amazing autism program that one of my children will most likely need, that is not offered anywhere else in the same kind of ability or environment, period. All-day pre-K program and more. As a parent, my expectations are simply three things. One, keep our kids safe and healthy in your care. Two, provide them with quality core education. And three, consistency. When I fought my cancer and the nearly two years, sorry, of surgeries and follow-up care, our Cleveland family took care of my kids in ways that I could probably never communicate to you. There are better paths forward and we must have the information that we need to make a good decision. We need to listen to reasonable suggestions that give us a better place to move forward. School closures are not the end result. What I ask is for you to roll up your sleeves and work with us, not against us. I'll email, of course, with time running out and post for those interested with my full suggestions based on the information we have. I hope the rest of the information becomes public because that's the only way we can actually provide meaningful feedback for you all. Thank you.
Thank you Thomas. Patrick, next speaker please.
Next speaker, David Lucas.
Welcome David.
Hello. Hello. My name is David Lucas. I have been a parent of... Sorry. Let me start over. My children have been in USD 259 for the past five years. I am here today because I am concerned there is a disconnect between those in public office who are charged with our children's education and the parents of those children. My choice to move into my current home was influenced by the schools in the area. I was happy to find Elementary Clark. A place where my son could start early, to form lasting friendships, and a solid foundation for his education. I have come to know and respect his teachers and the other parents who'd send their students there. Clark is an established school with a rich history of excellence and community involvement. I was happy to enroll my child there. And then in a series of events so rapid it bordered on suspicious, I was informed that due to a massive shortfall, several schools needed to be closed, my sons among them. I had several questions. Why the massive shortfall immediately after the COVID money ran out? My understanding was that that fund was primarily to ensure things like this didn't happen. What was that money spent on? Why the urgency to close these schools so quickly? Why was the community not involved in the decision-making process? What other options are there? So far, no answers have been forthcoming. I understand that these decisions are difficult and that there are many things that we have to take into consideration. But wouldn't it be better for us to take everyone in consideration? The timeline is simply too quick for everyone to become involved and for us to put out all of our best ideas. In the short time that we have had to discuss these things, even in the meetings that we had here, the listening meetings, I heard several ideas that admittedly were rough, but with polishing, we could use them. But we haven't had a chance for everyone to put forward those ideas and discuss them. I am very much against school closings until every avenue has been explored. I respectfully inform the board that all avenues have not been explored. That there needs to be, that the word is very common now, transparency, so that all of us can see the options that we have before us. I believe that we have many options and our community has much to offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you David. Patrick, next speaker please.
Next speaker, Heather Fusiliere.
Welcome Heather. You may start at any time.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed members of the board. Wichita community. I am Heather Fusiliere. Parent of kids who have gone to Wichita Public Schools. Born and raised here, went through the Wichita Public Schools myself. Former teacher for the Wichita Schools, only my health keeping me from that classroom. But I'm concerned. Whenever there's a budget issue, one of the last things, last things, that really should be used as a solution is cutting off access to kids. And closing schools is a big way of doing that. I understand. We're struggling, like most districts nationwide, with filling the vacancies in our schools. Along with the concerns about the results from scores, about buildings throughout the district and the state they're currently in due to age or lack of maintenance. I also understand that our district, like many districts within our state and across the nation, need help with ever-present funding issues. All valid. Very valid. But I ask that you take a moment and step back because honestly, I think we made a mistake. But mistakes are where learning happens the most. And the mistake that we have made is that we didn't consult our best and most valuable asset, which is the community in which we serve. I've seen those suggestions. There are other options out there. Yet already we have families who, because they support us so much, they're already making decisions and trying to figure out alternative plans for themselves based on what they've been told so far. But do they really have all the information? Please, I ask. Is this really what's best for them? Is this really meeting students where they're at? Which has been the goal for the Wichita Public Schools for as long as I can remember. First and foremost. And if it's not, then we need to take a step back so that we can do this right and be right by them as we have been charged to do. But we, the teachers, we can't do that unless you make a certain choice next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you Heather. Patrick, next speaker.
Next speaker, Janet Tisdale.
Welcome Janet.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I'm very impressed with the prior speakers. But I have a question about the closing of a specific school, Hadley Middle School. I have a history with Hadley as a full-time teacher and as a frequent substitute teacher after I retired from 259. I taught with many wonderful teachers and worked with many wonderful children at Hadley. I saw times of camaraderie and cooperation among staff and administration, a sharing of ideas and methods, and a genuine respect for colleagues. Around six years ago, I began to witness a staff cohesiveness fraying. And I saw many of those formerly collegial teachers transfer in large numbers each year until there were few of the staff I knew and admired still at the building. The morale dropped to a new low each year, up to the current year as well. I was made aware that there are only seven of the staff members that I knew still teaching there. My question stems from this state of low morale. Since the Hadley building and grounds are in reasonable repair, could the recommended closing of that school have been caused by the repeated transfers of good teachers and the less-than-healthy atmosphere at a once-vibrant school? Thank you.
Thank you Janet. I'm sorry Patrick, I wanted to write down her last thing she said. Next speaker please.
Next speaker, Andrea Gates.
Welcome Andrea, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, students, teachers, Board of Education, Superintendent. Thank you for opening up the availability for us to speak this evening. I have a few qualitative and one quantitative point on things that I have not been able to locate. Point number one, I have not seen us address how we can seek out additional streams of income, excise tax, sales tax, bond initiative, grant programs, and many more. I've seen a hyper-focus on the expense side. We can get year-over-year incoming cash flows. If we focus on what we want, we can get what we want. Point two. Disclose on a line-by-line basis the cost anticipated to close the schools. Much focus has been on the cost to open them. How do we know that the cost to close them is not materially more expensive? We need line-by-line data on option B. I would never move to a house if I didn't know that that house wasn't more cost-effective than the house I was moving from. Number three, for the student headcount, include children who were not born here. There is a material immigrant population. The children were not born here. They attend here. They eat here. They sleep here. They live here. Now, into the quantitative analysis. I wanted to focus on the most important piece in our district. A child's relationship with their teacher. So if you take one child's relationship with an average teacher who makes $50,000 a year, according to Indeed.com in this district and public school, and you put that child into a classroom of 20, their cut of that teacher's monetary value is $2,500 per year. If you go down, you fill that classroom up to 35 students, that same child gets $1,429 worth of that teacher's value. Basically, if you have a reasonably low classroom size, you're going to get double the value, give or take. Now this would happen from kindergarten all the way to grade 12. Let's say that child in the 20, number of 20 in the classroom goes all the way through, they will have gotten $32,500 of education value from their teacher, from just that one variable, same student. 35 children in a classroom, K through 12, they will have gotten $18,571 of that teacher's value, looking at just that one factor. Again, when they graduate, that child with the lower classroom size has gotten double the value from their teacher as the classroom with the higher size. Keep our school ratios low. I appreciate your attention to what we have not considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patrick, next speaker please.
Next speaker, Rob Egan.
I do not see Rob. We'll see if, we'll call for his name again later on. Patrick, next speaker please.
Next speaker, Araceli Amador.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm Araceli Amador. I'm a community animator for the South Side and I'm here to advocate for Cleveland, Payne, and Jordan. The South Side has been neglected for a long time. And taking away these assets is going to be really hurtful for my community. My children were in Cleveland School. They are successful kids. And also the classmates that they have, they were from the neighborhood. And all of them are successful professionals. And the structure of Cleveland Magnet School is unique for the South Side because I like that they teach read, math, science, social, and reading. They have been really good readers. They have been really good in math. And I feel that Cleveland School should not be closed at all because it's the only magnet school in the South Side. And I don't want any other asset being taken away from the South Side. And also, Jordan is impacting 190 students from Plainview. Do you know that 190 students well-impacted are going to be successful professionals in the future? If you're taking away that place, it's not good. It's not good for a low-income community that is taking advantage of these assets. And also, the other schools are neighborhood schools. These neighborhood schools are not just learning buildings. They are assets that are resources for these families. I ask you to vote no, closing the schools, and make a merry call for this to happen. You know, I know that the money is needed, but I...
And we are now, here February, at the very end, $42 million in a proposed deficit, with no transparency on any way, on any shape or form, what we have spent any of our money on, besides a new roof on Cleveland, a school that is proposed to close. Why on earth would the deficit, would you propose to put a new roof on a school that you are going to close down? Why would you put new security measures on Clark, another school you have proposed to close down? You have violated the statute 72, Article 1431, which goes against our state law. I will make sure, as someone who is a track athlete, a cheerleader, and a farmer's daughter, that I will go out door-to-door, day-to-day, from morning to night, after work, before work, after school, that everybody in this city will know exactly what you have been spending your money on and what you have chose to invest in. It is a shame that the people in charge of our budget have so blatantly drained our account and then have made the poorest communities in our area have to take the brunt of your mistakes. I want to take a moment and also to thank Melody and Noc for being there for every meeting, for writing down everything that has been going on. We know exactly how you will vote, and we thank you for standing with Wichita. Thank you for your work that you have been doing. For the rest of you, shame on you, shame on you. For all of the children, the staff members, the 230 teachers you hold hostage if we do not close these six schools, how dare you? How dare every single one of you do this to our community, to the people most impoverished, most in jeopardy? It is very clear how this has been steamrolled, that you do not believe that there are any other options, and you do not believe that Wichita deserves the right to say no. We withhold that from you. We deserve to say no, and we will say no, and we will be out there every day. If it has to go to a petition, all the way up to the Board of Education, so be it. We will make sure that the state of Kansas knows exactly what you have done.
Thank you. Thank you, Ruth. Patrick, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Sophia Alvaron.
Okay, we do need to use the earpieces on this one?
That is correct.
Buenas tardes.
One more second. Let me make sure, make sure everyone has... Okay, you may start.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Sophia Alvaran. Soy una de las familias impactadas por la decisión que han tomado de cerrar escuelas en nuestra comunidad. Mis hijos actualmente asisten a la Escuela Park. Como madre de familia, me siento inconforme con el cierre de seis escuelas que impactan mayormente áreas en desventaja económica y con alta población latina. Algunas de las consecuencias que percibo ante esta decisión es el aumento de bullying y agresión entre los estudiantes debido al aumento de niños que tendrán las escuelas designadas para recibirlos. Ya que actualmente nuestros hijos latinos ya sufren de eso sin que maestros o autoridades escolares hagan algo, pues muchas veces han ignorado a los padres de habla hispana que tratan de tener el bullying. También sé que se presentarán problemas psicológicos en los niños de las escuelas impactadas por el cierre. Estos niños ya enfrentan desafíos como inmigrantes o hijos inmigrantes que han crecido en sus vecindarios y escuelas adaptándose a su espacio y a su actual escuela. Pedimos que se revise minuciosamente la decisión de cerrar nuestras escuelas. No pueden tomar una decisión tan repentina sin evaluar los daños que causarán a comunidades ya de por sí vulnerables. Si la decisión de cerrar continúa después de una exhaustiva evaluación, que se nos permita elegir a la escuela, elegir las escuelas para nuestros hijos. Asimismo, se tome en cuenta que aunque no se viva la distancia de dos punto millas para calificar para el servicio de transporte, se nos garantice el transporte para nuestros niños, ya que vemos familias que no tenemos medio de transporte, que podamos matricular a nuestros hijos en las escuelas magnet como cualquier primaria y que no sea por sorteo. En el caso de mi familia, contamos con una escuela magnet en nuestro vecindario, y solo por sorteo pueden entrar nuestros hijos. Ustedes deberían hacer una excepción con los niños afectados por el cierre, ya que fue decisión de ustedes cerrar nuestra escuela sin un proceso que nos incluyera, afectándonos a nuestros hijos y de muchas maneras a nosotros. Ustedes, así como la gobernadora y otros líderes, siempre hablan que lo más importante para ustedes es la educación de nuestros hijos, y deberían también preocuparse por la salud emocional de ellos, para que puedan recibir una educación de calidad, sin bullying, sin estrés, y sin este tipo de decisiones que afectan a nuestras comunidades más vulnerables. De antemano, muchas gracias y esperemos reconsideren su decisión y al menos lleven a cabo un proceso más justo antes de la decisión definitiva, ya que somos muchas familias afectadas. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Sophia.
We have a request because the translation services were for your headphones that you have there.
Yeah, we'll give you three minutes. Did you basically want to translate what she just said?
I'm just going to read it off.
That'd be fine.
What's going on and what she said.
Absolutely, go ahead.
All right.
And sir, since, sir, since we don't have you on the official list, could you state your name, please?
Yes. All right. My name is Margarita. I'm translating for Sophia Alvaron. My name is Sophia Alvaron. I am one of the families impacted by the decision you have made to close schools in our community. My children are currently attending Park School. As a parent, I am unhappy with the closure of six schools that mostly impacted economically areas in high Latino populations. Some of the consequences I perceive in the face of the decision and the increase in bullying aggression among students due to increase in children that the school designed to receive them with. Since currently our Latino children already suffer from that without teachers and school authorities doing anything because many of the times they are ignored because they're Spanish-speaking. Parents who complain about bullying, I also know that there will be problems with children from schools impacted by the closures. Many of our children already have faced challenges as immigrants or children of immigrants who have grown up in our neighborhoods and schools, adapting to their space, their current schools. We call for review of our decisions to close our school. They cannot make such a sudden decision without assessing the damage that will be caused to already vulnerable communities. If the decision to close them continues evaluation, we ask you to allow us to choose the school for our children. We also ask to take into account that even if we do not live at the distance of 2.5 miles to qualify for the transportation services, that we are granted transportation for our children, since they are families who do not mean or have transportation. In my family case, we have a magnet school in our neighborhood and can only be one... Hold on a second, please. I'm sorry about that. You should make an exception for the children affected by the closure. If it was your decision to close our school without due process would exclude us, affecting us or children in many ways. You, as well as the government and other leaders, always talking about how important it is to have education for our children, and you should also be concerned about their emotional health so that they can receive the qualification education without bullying, without stress, and without this type of decisions that affect our communities. Thank you so much in advance, and we hope that you reconsider the decision, at least conduct a fair process before making a final decision. Please make us involve.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that second effort. Patrick, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Natalia Padilla.
Thank you. I'm here to speak in name of all Tiger families who will be affected by the closing of Cleveland Traditional Magnet. All those moms who live close to school and they walk to take their kids because they don't have a car or they don't have a driver's license. And from all the working moms who live, who leave the children at Latchkey because we don't have other options. And we are grateful that Cleveland offers this program and more for us working parents. Cleveland was not only a school for my kids, but was also a secure and safe place. I will leave my kids early morning at Latchkey and they will go back home in the bus. I have to work and my husband, who's legally blind, does not drive. Will wait for them at home, having the bus service from Cleveland change our lives, and that was only because I applied to the Magnet program. My husband and kids didn't have to walk in the snow or to worry about the heat during the summer. Thanks to the hearing test and the staff at Cleveland, we found out that my daughter has a hearing loss. She was also struggling at school and not finishing none of her assignments. And it because, it was because of the teachers and the staff that my daughter was diagnosed with ADHD after seeing the therapist. And she was diagnosed and got her treatment that she needed and a lot of support from the school. One day, they called me from the school to pick her up because she had pneumonia. I honestly didn't believe that because she was not coughing or have any symptoms. After taking her to the doctor, yes, she had pneumonia. And it was that day that I realized how blessed I was to have Cleveland as our school. They changed my daughter's life three times. My daughter is now thriving at middle school and all because of Cleveland and their staff. Cleveland has a lot to offer: all-day pre-K program, Latchkey, ASOL program, special education program, Avid, new playground. But the most important thing is that they have caring staff. Cleveland for us is family. And I'm very glad for all of you that never have to worry about your kids walking to your house in the snow when the heat, because obviously all of you are not blind. And I'm sorry, the lady here, Diane, I'm fast, so you can, maybe you're sleepy. I saw you, you're sleepy. That's fine. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalia. Next speaker, Patrick.
Next speaker, Jamie Pettigene.
So I will miss my friends, and I can't walk home all by myself because I have, I have to go to a new school.
To the Board of Education, closing down these schools will cause so many issues, the children suffering from certain disorders like autism, OCD, ODD, all other very difficult transitions starting out fresh, with new people who don't know them, which will cause more stress on teachers and classrooms. This can cause disruptions in learning for everyone. The class sizes currently are great at Clark. The children can get on one-on-one transactions with the teacher and staff members. For my daughter, she's gone to the same school since pre-K, and they have gotten her and her older brother reading levels up because of the small classes provided at Clark. If you close Clark, it's going to be bigger classrooms, it's not going to be more one-on-one. All the staff knows me and my children by name, and it makes my children so happy. She has friends that she's had since pre-K, and with this new proposal, it has her and her best friend group splitting into three different schools. Clark has been opened in 1953 with 212 students, now it has 300, so it is growing. What doesn't make sense is we all live within two blocks from Clark and five blocks from each other, which that brings me to my next point. This school is in an area where it's easy for children to walk to school. Now siblings who could get out of school and walk a little bit to get other siblings to be safe can no longer do that, and now that puts them into an unsafe walking distance. Strain on the parents that cannot miss work. And according to the bus rules, we all live within 2.5 miles range for busing. So the three families I'm talking about cannot be bused, nor do I think small children should be bused without seat belts. They are too little, even if the buses are safe, not for little ones. So now, parents are going to have to miss work to make sure their children can get to and from school safely. But on another hand, a lot of the families are low-income or single parents and do not have a car to use for whatever reason. Another thing I will add is why did the board decide to put in a new playground and redo the walkways around the school if it was on the closure? And I'm very glad for all of you that never have to worry about your kids walking to your house in the snow when the heat because obviously all of you are not blind. And I'm sorry the lady here, Diane, I'm fast so you can, maybe you're sleepy. I saw you, you're sleepy. That's fine. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you Natalia. Next speaker, Patrick?
Next speaker, Jamie Pettigene.
Welcome Jamie.
So I will miss my friends and I can't walk home all by myself. Okay, cause I have, I have to go to a new school.
To the Board of Education, closing down these schools will cause so many issues. The children suffering from certain disorders like autism, OCD, ODD, all other very difficult transitions starting out fresh. With new people who don't know them, which will cause more stress on teachers and classrooms. This can cause disruptions in learning for everyone. The class sizes currently are great at Clark. The children can get on one-on-one transactions with the teacher and staff members. For my daughter, she's gone to the same school since pre-K and they have gotten her and her older brother reading levels up because of the small classes provided at Clark. If you close Clark, it's going to be bigger classrooms. It's not going to be more one-on-one. All the staff knows me and my children by name and it makes my children so happy. She has friends that she's had since pre-K and with this new proposal, it has her and her best friend group splitting into three different schools. Clark has been opened in 1953 with 212 students. Now it has 300. So it is growing. What doesn't make sense is we all live within two blocks from Clark and five blocks from each other. Which that brings me to my next point. This school is in an area where it's easy for children to walk to school. Now siblings who could get out of school and walk a little bit to get other siblings to be safe can no longer do that. And now that that puts them into an unsafe walking distance. Strain on the parents and that cannot miss work. And according to the bus rules, we all live within 2.5 miles range for busing. So the three families I'm talking about cannot be bused, nor do I think small children should be bused without seat belts. They are too little. Even if the buses are safe, not for little ones. So now parents are going to have to miss work to make sure their children can get to, to and from school safely. But on another hand, a lot of the families are low income or single parents and do not have a car to use for whatever reason. Another thing I will add is why did the board decide to put in a new playground and redo the walkways around the school? If it was on the closing list of possible closures? The whole situation could have been avoided if the money allocated to the schools would have been properly used properly on building, maintenance and upkeeping. Poor planning on the board's part shouldn't punish the children and the families who are now being displaced and getting more stress added to all already stressful worlds.
With, with Lila's school closing, she won't see her friends and it will not be safe to work, walk and more work on my mom. Cause my mom can't get my little sister. I helped go get her so she will be safe from getting kidnapped. And with Clark closing, I won't be able to pick her up cause other schools are too far and not safe to walk to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Carrie Kirk.
We will check with Carrie later. Patrick, next speaker.
Next speaker, Darren Smalls.
Welcome Darren, start anytime.
Alright. Well, welcome everybody. Thank you for hearing all of us. I want to start by saying I work at Hadley Middle School and I heard the lady earlier say that the morale was down. That's not true. We have a music program that just pitched to the district on the curriculum that he's using because we're innovative there. Our leadership that's in place hired some advocates for the, the youth and put them in, in positions to where they can make a change. So I don't think you should make a knee-jerk reaction off of numbers and do it so fast without going to the schools and knowing what's going on in the schools. Because like I said, we, at Hadley, we turning that around. Yes, like she said, it dipped down for a while. I've been there for almost two years now. And we've seen the pride of wanting to be at Hadley. We had a student that fought tooth and nail so he could go to Hadley. So that should speak to the, the character of the school in itself. And another point that I wanted to make was the bigger issue to me is we need to look at why is enrollment down in schools across the board? Because see, we say we taking care of the kids and we say that the school district is about the kids, but y'all not showing it. That's why, uh, parents are taking kids out of the school district and putting them into private schools and other schools. So I think y'all need to look at, hold up, why are people pulling their kids out first of all? And then after you ask yourself that, then fix it another way besides closing schools because that's, that's not going to do anything. And at, uh, our school, you just redid the track over the summer and one of the schools that we supposed to go to don't have a track at all. And again, we have a proven track team that's won consecutively for the last three years. And you going to tell them kids, we going to take you out of a school that has a track that we just refurbished and put you in a school that don't have a track? You can't do that. And you, and, and I've heard that you using AI to take the emotion out of the, the reaction? You can't do that. This is an emotional, uh, an emotional deal that everybody's going through. So you can't get robotic with people's lives. You can't do that. You are dealing with people's lives here. It's bigger than money. So you can't sit behind a desk and look at the numbers and think you know what's going on in the schools. You don't. So we have to look out for these kids, not by speech, but by deed. So we can't say it's about the kids and about the future, but we just throwing them to the wayside because that's what y'all doing. It don't matter what they think. Oh, the numbers say this. I'm going to say this in closing, if something is going on at the bottom of a business, it's up to the leaders to look at their self before they look at the bottom. Because they the ones that are in control. So look at yourselves before you look at what's going on in these schools.
Thank you Darren. Patrick, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Walt Chapel.
Welcome Walt.
Thank you Stan. Good to see you, sir. You know, I'm very concerned about this issue. You know that. We've had a chance to visit some of us. But I'm very attached to the idea that it's people over places, right? Isn't that the mantra? People over places? I'm just very impressed with all the speakers who come forward. These people out here are family. These teachers, these students are what are impacted. They're the people, they are the people that we need to protect, not the schools. The schools are mixed, the brick and mortar. But we have a situation right now where you have so many other options to look at than to close schools. It just does not add up at all. I've taken a look at your four issues. You say you have an enrollment problem. Well, we had COVID, right? So every school district in the nation had a drop in enrollment. It's coming back. You're at 47,000. That's basically the same as what it was in 2016, 17. In fact, in the last 20 years, you've never had over 40,000. You claim, excuse me, less than 40,000. You claim 63,000 is your capacity. I don't know where that number comes from. Because we've never had that in the recent last 20 or 30 years. And yet we have some very dedicated teachers. We have parents and teachers that come to these schools every single day to try to make sure their kids are learning. The next thing you say is you have lots of COVID funds. Okay, well that was one-time money. You hired a bunch of people and you did a bunch of expenditures. You went through $263 million. Okay, why did we now say we're short 42 million? In addition to that, you had the 285 million at the start of the school year. Then it was supposed to be 118 million. That's what you report to the State Board of Education. And again, now you claim that you're short 42 million. And there's no indication that you're going to save 16.2 by closing six schools. There's none. Back in the school bond issue when we had 400 million spent, a lot of these schools renovated. Many of the buildings you're talking about right now, you just heard from parents about new roofs, new playground, new track and so forth. Why throw that away? Those are our tax dollars. Our parents, our teachers all deserve to have you make a better choice than what you've been offered. I thank you for your time. Hopefully you'll look at those options and we'll come up with something different as a way to solve a quote, "problem" that you may or may not even have. Thank you.
Thank you Walt. Patrick, next, next speaker?
Next speaker, Trish Heilman.
Welcome Trish.
Thanks Stan. Hello President Reeser, Vice President Albert, School Board Members and Superintendent Bellafield. My name is Trish Heilman and I'm here to ask you to decline the administration's suggestion of closing six schools today for the budget benefit of $16 million. Closing six school buildings, oh, I'm here as the Vice President of Wichita Independent Neighborhoods, a parent of five children, three of whom have graduated from 259, one of whom still attends 259. Closing six school buildings, dismantling the communities that have been built there for decades, which it's been amazing to hear from the communities that have represented here today, is a breach of trust. The fact that it saves $16 million doesn't seem to be worth it to me from a community trust keeping, educational outcomes standpoint. This will be a difficult process and it will bring with it generalized community lack of trust in our public schools. And if families have choice in other districts upcoming, our school buildings, closing school buildings does not say to families that our district is a safe future option. Sorry, going to the email version. Instead of closing schools, the focus should be on improving educational outcomes and promoting the district as a desirable choice. Innovative solutions such as reducing reliance on technology in elementary schools can lead to better educational outcomes and cost savings. Registering our 59 pre-1960s buildings for regional and national preservation programs saves us maintenance costs. Renting out school spaces to community partners can generate revenue without sacrificing community cohesion. And it sounds like you're tapping into our amazing Wichita community has given you many, many more ideas to consider. Prioritizing the well-being and educational opportunities of students over minimal budget savings is crucial. A focus on educational outcomes will attract families to our public schools, ensuring the district's long-term viability. Exploring alternative options that address budget concerns without disrupting communities is essential. In conclusion, I urge the board to consider the long-term impact of closing schools and to prioritize the well-being and educational opportunities of our students. Thank you sincerely for listening to us.
Thank you Trish. Patrick, next speaker?
Next speaker, Ashley Hawley.
Welcome Ashley.
Good evening. I don't actually have a three-minute speech wrote out. I don't think I have three minutes to explain how much your decision pretty soon is going to impact a lot of us. I can't explain how much Cleveland means to my family and how much Hadley means to me. I went to Hadley. I've also went to Cleveland. I actually have lived at 33rd and Sheridan for about 30 years of my life. So I've looked out my front door and seen Cleveland for as long as I can remember and sending my kids there and sending my nieces who I now have guardianship of. They have also went through Cleveland schools. We have kept the same teachers that we have supposed to have. We're, we're kind of in the same family. Everybody loves each other. My school has also been there for me through the passing of my mother and my sister. My nieces were enrolled at Cleveland when their mother passed away. And Cleveland has been there for us since all of this has happened. We love our teachers, like I said before in our listening sessions, down to our janitors. We love everybody in our schools. And just because we don't have a lunchroom doesn't mean that we are not a school. I went to Cleveland in the 90s. I went to school there a couple of years of my life. We've never had a lunchroom. We've never been given room in our building until recently. We've been given playgrounds. We've been given stuff to fix the school, but the school's never been fully fixed. To just throw that away, it's just useless. I don't understand where that comes from. So much time that people have put into putting effort into their kids' education is just being thrown out the door. And my son, having ADHD himself, being able to be understood by teachers at his school is very difficult for some teachers to understand. Myself also having troubles with transitioning into my youth. I was a foster child. I have been through the foster care system since the age of four. I've attended Cleveland. I've attended all of our neighborhood schools. I graduated in South being a cheerleader. I have been through the whole school system. I went to Hadley. It was probably my favorite school I've ever been to. And if it wasn't for that school, I don't know where I would be right now. It saved me from a lot of trouble in my life. And taking that away from our children is not what we need right now. I think making a rash decision on stuff that we're not even transparent with, you haven't even been transparent with us, that's one of our issues is we don't talk about those things with parents but expect us to know what's going on and that's not right. That's really all I got to say. I'm here to advocate for my kid, my children, all the kids here. We really need to look at it a little bit better, what everybody's saying. There's more to consider than just throwing it out.
Thank you Ashley. Patrick, next speaker?
Next speaker, Lisha Watts.
Welcome Lisha.
Hi, my name is Lisha Watts. I'm also known as the book lady and now the sign lady because every day since your guys's announcement, I've been outside Park Elementary with my sign about how shame on the BOE and how much this will affect my son. My son is over there sleeping right now because he hasn't been able to sleep since you guys have, you guys have said his school was going to be taken away from him. We walk to and from school. Right now, I'm, I live at Humankind Apartments and it's a five-minute walk to Park Elementary. The school that they want him to go to, Washington, 1.6 miles one way. That's in the snow, that's in the rain and that's in the heat. And that's with the homeless population and that's with the drugs and the motels. I don't think that we can make it that far every day because my son is autistic. High functioning, yes. Top of his class, yes, thanks to Park. But some mornings, he doesn't feel like going to school, especially recently. And that's sad. He's six years old. He should be thrilled to go to school, happy to go to school. But now every day, he's like, when do I go to my new school? I don't want to go to school. And that's sad. I know that it's been said that Park Elementary is one of two programs or two schools that have all-day pre-K. And if you take that away from the single moms, you take that away from single dads, you know, foster parents, grandparents, how are they going to work? How are they going to keep their apartment? Now that I have to walk, I will have to walk with my son over an hour one way to take him to school and come back. That's two hours a day. I can't work. You know, that's, that's less, I'm a single mom. I can only work from 8:30 or no, okay, because he goes to school at 9:00, 9:30 to 3:30 as is. Now I have to take an extra hour, you know? And then if you take that out of the neighborhood, we already don't have a McDonald's, we don't have a Popeyes, Burger King is closing, we got rid of Subway and Tootas Teriyaki, we got, we're getting rid of everything. You're going to have nothing but drugs, homeless and prostitution. And then you move all these borders around and you're going to have gangs fighting? Gangs are real. They're going to be fighting amongst the schools and you're going to have that mix too. And the parents are mixed too and I know the, I know gangs will happen, fighting will happen. And we don't need any more killings this year. My son was going to get up here and talk, but he's asleep right now. He's finally feels, he finally feels safe, you know, because he knows that we're fighting for his future. He did draw a card that he wanted to share. He is the next one on the list, Benjamin Watts. He says that he doesn't want to walk a long distance. When you take away a school, it makes him feel like he has no home and he's a foster kid. He loves pizza and he wants pizza at his new school. And that it makes him sad every day when he wakes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, next speaker?
As Ms. Watts said, her son is the next speaker, but we have two members of the public who signed up to speak in person. Do you, do you want me to read their names and then go back and we'll, we'll check to see if anybody who was not here previously showed up?
Yes.
Uh, next speaker is Kenton Drury.
Welcome Kenton.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kenton Drury. Our organization is the owner of Brentwood Apartments, a rental community, naturally occurring affordable rental community at 6602 East Henry Street. The elementary school aged children at the Brentwood Community currently attend Clark Elementary. It's our understanding that they will, with the closure of Clark, they will be attending Allen Elementary. So we're here to request that the Wichita school system provide additional quality teachers at Allen so its student teacher ratio will not increase. So its student teacher ratio will not increase. I think it's uh currently about fourteen to one, fourteen students to a teacher. Um, also, um, we'd like to ask that action to, should be taken to improve reading ma- reading and math proficiency significantly above Allen's current level of eight percent for math and twenty-two percent for reading. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you Kenton. Patrick, next item, I mean next.
Next speaker is Mozart Padia.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity. Well, um, I'm a junior at Northwest High School and I've I went to USD two-five-nine schools my entire life. And as a former student of Cleveland Magnet and a family member of a Park Elementary student, I can't explain the importance of these schools. Not only do these schools have amazing staff, programs and provide necessary teaching for kids to strive and not only do good in school, but are motivated to do so. Closing these schools would hurt the families in these areas by adding more stress to the overwhelming amount that they already have. The kids would lose bonds with friends that they that were so important to them for them to be motivated to go to school and be motivated to learn. Cause school isn't just learning. It's relationships, personal- personality building, character building, so much more things just than books and reading. At Cleveland, I had depression, clinical depression and um teachers would tell my mom that. And there was multiple times where my mom, she would ask me like, what's wrong? And it's just like, English is my second language and when I first got here, I would go to Gardner and then people like Gardner would bully me because I didn't speak English right. Whenever I got to Cleveland, my third grade year, I was still kind of iffy at English. I was in speech classes. But I was, I was greeted so like I was treated so like amazingly. And I learned English to the point where I can speak, speak how I do now. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to focus on, that teachers and students, the relationship that they have in these schools, these schools that are inner, inner-city schools, kids that are immigrants, kids that are middle-class, kids that are, don't have the type of things that other students have in like in other areas. These schools provide, like how other people in the crowd have said, family, a family that can provide more than sometimes your family at home can, you know? And closing these schools would save money for I'm not going to say more important things, but it would save money for things that you could say are needed. But the money that you save isn't going to save the relationships that you break in these schools. And that's, that's all I have to say.
We appreciate you signing up tonight. Patrick, next speaker.
Uh, I'll go back and start at the top of the list. Uh, we had Sarah Johnson.
Is Sarah here? Next speaker, Patrick.
The next speaker was Laura Branning.
Is Laura here? Go ahead, Patrick.
Okay, uh, after Ms. Branning, uh, we uh we had Kishima Ford speak and she had intended her daughter, Tiriana Issa, to accompany her there. Uh, would would it be okay if Ms. Issa?
Absolutely. Welcome, and if you would just state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Tiriana Issa.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tiriana Issa. I'm a seventh grader that and I attend Jardine Middle School. I would like to touch bases with everyone and talk to you all about how Jardine and other schools closing would affect me and others if they closed. Here are some of the reasons why the six schools closing would have a huge impact on my life and many others. The first reason being, I and many other students have created many relationships with students and staff. But if we went to a new school, that will all be taken away, taken away. And we would have to create new friendships with new faces and and people. When we students have already created those friendships and relationships, we would have to make new ones instead of the ones we have at our current school. My second reason as to why this would impact many, many because I and many other students do not live close to the school. That that they are currently attending. So if I attend my base school or a different school, they might not offer the same transportation that Jardine offers me as such as a bus to drive me to and from school every day. Lastly, my new school might not offer the clubs and activities that I participated in at Jardine, such as volleyball, student council, tech team, video production, leadership, avid and gaming concepts. Show, uh, this shows just how much Jardine can offer a student. Many extracurricular activity, this, these many extracurricular activities. I and many other students very much enjoy all of these. Things that, uh, all of these things that Jardine offers. I know that I'm not an adult, but I hope you all take my opinion in consideration before making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We will uh ask if Michael Jordan is here. Did he come in late? Okay, uh, Patrick, next speaker.
The next speaker I had is Rob Egan.
That's what I had as well. Is Rob here? I believe that concludes.
We had, we had one more. I had Carrie Kirk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carrie? Oh, I'm sorry. I marked it and then realized, yeah. Is Carrie here? I believe that's the end of speakers tonight then.
That that is correct.
President Reser, I propose a motion to adjourn tonight's public meeting.
And accept the comments, which I think is a given. Is there, uh, there's a motion to adjourn?
I second.
To accept the and to accept the comments and reconvene on Monday night, moved by Diane, seconded by Hazel. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, uh, passes seven zero, Patrick. I thank everyone and I think we should all be proud of the way we um met tonight as a community and we'll see you all on Monday.